Good evening. The school board meeting for April 18th, 2017 is now in session. We would like to thank all of you who are in attendance with us in person or watching the meeting from another location for investing your time and energy to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board and Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
Microphone's not working? If I unmute you, you just have to ask permission to speak, Mr. Ziegler, so I can unmute your mic.
Mine too.
Is that bad again?
Apparently. I can unmute you, so if you'll just give me a-
What if you unmute and then turn them off? Is that what? Nope.
Oh, there we go. Now they're all on.
No, you guys are all live continuously, though.
Okay. I'm not on at all.
Yes, proceeding. Just raise your hand and I'll power you up, okay? All right. At this time, I would like to hold a moment of silence for two members of our VPS family who have recently passed away. Andrew Grooms, a 4th grade student from Odyssey Charter School, and Katie Dunham-Murish, a teacher from Columbia Elementary. Our thoughts and hearts are with their families and friends. This evening, Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Reed.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I would like to offer my fellow board members the opportunity to recognize staff, students, or community members. Board members? Anyone? Mr. Craig?
I'd like to recognize the local chapter of Junior Achievement and the leadership there, and also the leadership at Endeavour Elementary, Principal Hylla Mercer. Several of us attended the JA in a day that they did at Endeavour Friday before spring break. Outstanding event. Partnered with Eastern Florida State College, where teaching student teachers came into the classrooms and presented the JA curriculum, which is a financial fiduciary management curriculum tailored to individual class levels, all the way from kindergarten, goes all the way to 12th grade, but of course Endeavour, we went up to 6th. And it was really cool. We walked through, I think Mr. Susan and Mr. Ziegler and I got to walk through several of the classrooms and see it in action, and the kids were having a blast. And I really appreciate what Junior Achievement does for this community and how they continue to refine and evolve into being pertinent to today's needs in our schools. And Mr. Ziegler made a great comment about how, you know, the legislature is really pushing to add a financial management, mandatory financial management class in elementary curriculum. We are fortunate enough to have such a great Junior Achievement. We are already doing that, and it's pretty cool to watch on a basis where they just take over the whole school and do it for a day. So thanks to them. And also, I'd like to thank Georgiana United Methodist Church. They spent two days last week redoing all of the landscaping at Cambridge Elementary, remulching, replanting, I think about 10 pallets of mulch and close to 300 or 400 new plants and shrubs and trees and stuff to make that school look really nice. So it was a great community partnership, great outreach by them, and certainly appreciated by the school district and certainly by Cambridge themselves. So thank you to them.
Ms. Deskovich?
I want to give a shout out to Ms. Trina Bloom and the Odyssey of the Mine team at Sea Park Elementary School. They were awarded first place in Brevard County and then first place also in the state of Florida. And so they're going on to World Competition in about two months, and now they've got the challenge of raising a lot of money to get them and all their props and their set and everything up to Milwaukee, somewhere up in that area. They also won, I wish, oh, I didn't write down the name of their special award, but they won some special award that's not even given unless it's just exceptional. Mrs. Bloom said that they actually brought in the founder of OM to watch their skit because it was so exceptional. The judges were all crying, apparently, and the founder said it was one of the most amazing OM performances he's ever seen. So they're going to be hosting a night at their school in May that's open to the public to come see it before they head off to Worlds. So that's what I have to report.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Susan?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First, I wanted to say thank you to Penny Zurker for putting together that budget workshop for us today. That was amazing, being able to go through each one of the line items and really divulge into what we're asking for. And for the first time, I think that's been done, and just to show what the staff's doing and what everybody's on board with is amazing. Next thing is, yes, that Junior Achievement was an amazing thing. First time I visited Endeavour, and it was a really nice school. And got to say hi to some old friends that were there. I ran into one of them and some of those teachers. It's just amazing what our school district does in that regard. And then the crowning thing that I've had since the last time I made a board meeting was I got to, they're putting together an advanced manufacturing center at Cocoa High School, and BRPH put together a four-hour presentation, pulled community stakeholders together and said, "What do you guys want as a community?" We identified certain problems that we may need to do with construction, what we want as an outcome to fit the pipeline for talent for our colleges and for our universities and also for our community. And I feel very positive about the process of what's going on up there in Cocoa and how that's probably going to turn into one of our career and technical centers between that and adult ed. So those were some of the things that it did, and I just wanted to say, you know, we're doing some great things here.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Susan. I have two quick, well, relatively quick things this evening. One, a shout out to Emily Oliver, who is a student at Roy Allen Elementary. She did her science project on polystyrene or styrofoam lunch trays and has had some conversation with some of our staff here at the district about what we could potentially do here. But the thing I really want to give her kudos is about is she didn't stop there. She went and spoke to the county commission to see what the county as a whole could do to reduce the use of styrofoam. And did a great job speaking to the commission. Commissioner Pritchett reached out to me to say, "Hey, you know, can we have some conversations about what potentially the county and the district could do in this realm?" And so we're talking. I don't have a great answer yet. Not sure that anyone does at this point, but the fact that she had taken that initiative to really reach out and address that issue head-on and try to make a positive impact in the community, I think, shows the caliber of students that we have here in Brevard, and we certainly are appreciative of her passion. The other, I had the opportunity yesterday to go to Imperial Estates Elementary, and Jane Klein worked with representatives from City of Titusville to coordinate the donation of a 3D printer to Imperial Estates. And yesterday was their ceremony to present the 3D printer to the students. The printer came from a collaboration between various companies that are really leaders in their area and certainly potentially are very, could potentially be a part of our efforts going forward, ensuring that our students have the skills they need in the future. And each and every one of those companies is really passionate also about education and being involved in education. So a huge thank you. Walt Johnson, mayor of Titusville, was there, so a thank you to him for taking time out of his day to be there. And then those companies that worked together to get the printer donated. Greg Jones was there. He's the vice president of Smart Force Development of the Association for Manufacturing Technology. Brian Cam was there. He's the founder and gap consultant of CAM Consulting, who works to provide opportunities for internships and, I'm not thinking of the correct word, but apprenticeships and lots of technology jobs. Mark Sutton, the production manager of RUAG Space, and Kai Schmidt, the human resources director of OneWeb. And then also Greg Cecil, the K-12 Schools to Space Outreach Coordinator of Spacetech, who's doing some interesting work with our schools. And Steve Kane, the managing director of Spacetech as well. So many thanks to all of those companies for supporting our schools. Not only are they supporting, but they initiated and reached out to us, so we're very appreciative. And I've tasked Ms. Archer with reaching out to them to ensure that we continue to keep them in the conversation going forward as we look at other projects. And with that, Dr. Blackburn, do you have any recognitions you'd like to relay at this time?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Belford. First want to recognize and again provide a countywide good luck to our very own Employee of the Year state finalist, Ms. Jamie Skinner, who's cafeteria manager at Williams Elementary. A special recognition would be presented by the Department of Education at their annual Employee of the Year breakfast this Friday in Orlando. I know Mrs. Klein and a few others plan on making the trip with Ms. Skinner. So again, Ms. Skinner, thank you for everything that you do, your devoted service to our students. And if the Department of Education gets just one thing right this year, they will select you as statewide employee of the year. Congratulations, Ms. Skinner. I also want to thank our Human Resources Division, Dr. Kent, and almost 20 principals for committing a lot of time on their personal, a lot of personal time this year with our Level 5 Leadership Program, and that's where current principals work tirelessly to build the capacity of the up-and-coming system principals and other teacher leaders. And they really put a lot of energy into preparing people to take their jobs. I mean, it's just, it's an amazing thing. So I need to thank them personally, just about 20 people. Principals Cynthia Adams, Samantha Allison, Richard Dunkle, Victoria Finstead, Jackie Anguata, Anita Jones, Chad Kirk, Eli Lee, Ina Leba, Michael Miller, Chris Moore, Elaine Passanese, Chris Reed, Jeremy Solomon, Todd Shear, Stephanie Sullivan when she was a principal, Sherry Tomlinson, Molly Vega, and Rashad Wilson. Thank you very much for your commitment to leadership development. Much of this would not be possible if not for the partnership we received from Deborah Blair and Community Credit Union for sponsoring much of that program. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn, and that brings us to the adoption of the agenda.
Mrs. Belford and members of the board on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, one recognition item, 18 consent items, two action items, and seven information items, as well as a superintendent's discussion item. You also have the supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There were revisions to administrative staff recommendations, a revision to consent item F-16 on the renewal of the board's property, boiler machinery, and terrorism insurance policies, the addition of consent item F-21 on a field trip for the Melbourne High School crew team, a revision to action items G-28 on department-school initiated agreements, and G-29 on purchasing solicitations. And due to no parent petitions being received, the deletion of the action item for the public hearing for elementary music, K-12 visual arts, and secondary theater instructional materials adoption. Additionally, an item regarding follow-up to recent audit findings was added to the superintendent's report.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan to approve the agenda for April 17th. Any discussion? Please vote. 18th. Thank you, Pam. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, let's move on to the administrative staff recommendations.
Yes, ma'am. Item B-8 is to present Manatee Elementary with the 2000-
(inaudible)
Like I said, Mrs. Belford, on tonight's agenda, you have two administrative staff recommendations to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Blackburn, will you please tell us about the administrative staff recommendations?
No.
None?
None.
Okay. Then will you tell us about the recognition item?
I've been dying to, Mrs. Belford. So item B-8 is to present Manatee Elementary with the 2017-2020 Excellence in Physical Education Award. Here to present the award is Rachel Winston, physical education, health, and drivers' education resource teacher. Ms. Winston, you're not Ms. Winston.
I am not Ms. Winston. I am Barbara Rodriguez, Director of Secondary Leading and Learning. Rachel lost her voice. Spring break, playing with her children, I believe, so she's asked me to speak for her this evening. Good evening, Dr. Blackburn and board members. The Excellence in Physical Education Award Program is presented annually to schools that offer physical education programs of superior quality. The purpose of the award is to identify, recognize, and promote exemplary Brevard Public Schools' physical education programs at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. In preparation, schools are engaged in a rigorous process of answering more than 35 inquiries about their programs, which are then compiled into a portfolio for a very sharp pencil review by a committee of teachers of past award winners. The portfolio review is then followed by a site visit from physical education experts from across the state, including the physical education specialists from the Florida Department of Education. This year, three schools submitted their portfolios. One, Manatee Elementary, was recommended for a site visit. The school honored here tonight has successfully completed each of these rigorous steps for review. This is our 10th year of the Excellence in Physical Education Award Program, and it is important to note that this is a three-year award for these schools, which will be in effect for 2017 to 2020. As you can see on the wall, Manatee has won this exemplary physical education award. This is their second time winning it, so it has been updated to display it on the wall for them. The banner will be showcased in their building to let the community know of their great achievement. As recipients of the 10th Annual Excellence in Physical Education Award, physical education teacher receives a monetary stipend from the district and will be receiving a polo shirt designating the school's achievement from funds donated to Brevard Schools Foundation, specifically for this program. Teachers earning recognitions like these are those who have changed lives forever. Many of us wouldn't be who we are if it were not for teachers who challenged, encouraged, and inspired us. We're extremely proud of our exemplary teachers and model programs. Dr. Blackburn, Mrs. Belford, would you please join me, join Rachel, in recognizing Brevard Public Schools' Excellence in Physical Education Award winner for 2017 through 2020?[1151.13][1151.13](applause) As I call your name, please come forward to receive your recognition from Dr. Blackburn and Mrs. Belford. Principal of Manatee Elementary School, Mr. Carl Brown. Assistant Principal of Manatee Elementary, Ms. Shannon Daly. And physical education teacher, Tabitha Best.
Okay, we are now at public comments. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Please be reminded that statements shall be directed to the board chairperson. No person may address or question board members individually. The board chairperson may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If an individual does not observe reasonable decorum, the board chairperson may request that individual leave the meeting. Please keep in mind that we often have children present and/or children viewing our board meetings, and we encourage an environment appropriate for them. Comments regarding agenda items up for action will be considered when making our decisions. Additionally, board members may assist with connecting public speakers to district staff that can assist with concerns, respond in brief to comments made by speakers that require immediate clarification, or request that response to specific speakers be placed on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Those responses will take place at the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. I request that you speak into the microphone and state your name, your address, and your group affiliation. Thank you. Our speakers this evening in order are Gary Shifrin, Anthony Clucci, Dan Bennett. Those are our first three. Mr. Shifrin, if you would like to approach, please.
Gary Shifrin, Executive Director of the Brevard Association of School Administrators. Dr. Blackburn, Chairperson Belford, and school board members. I come before you tonight to thank our superintendent. Dr. Blackburn, this year implemented monthly meetings with BASSA, BFT, and 10-10. At one of our meetings in December, we were having a discussion of what we could do to improve the evaluation process for our employees. It was at this time that Dr. Blackburn charged BASSA and BFT to collaborate and bring back a proposal that will provide a better evaluation process that will continue the importance of determining the quality of work that our employees do, but not have wasteful time elements. With that charge, both the BFT and BASSA selected three representatives from each organization, and in January met to discuss viable options. Following that, we met with Dr. Blackburn and Dr. Kent to propose the results of the collaborative effort. Our proposals included doing away with the PGP and consideration for a short form following a highly effective rank in the previous year. I recall when I was the principal of Merritt Island when the evaluation process went on steroids. The politicians in Tallahassee felt that school employees needed to have such an extensive evaluation process that the time it took to fulfill the process was way out of hand. In fact, I also remember being at a dinner honoring one of our teachers in Orlando, and a principal from Hillsborough County was at our table. He told me, "Be glad your county did not adopt the Marzano Plan," because he spent his entire days doing observations, conferences, and other related evaluation issues. Then when teachers left for the day, that was when he did his principal responsibilities that he used to do before Marzano. So the fact that Dr. Blackburn has agreed to do away with the professional growth plan and cut back on the required conferences and observations says volumes about respecting our teachers and giving them back so much needed time for them to devote to actually teaching and working with students. And then, he also didn't forget the administrators and did away with the deliberate practice which the school improvement plan can now be used. That to save valuable time for administrators so they can also provide more instructional leadership and quality education. A great leader is one who recognizes that there's a better way to do things and takes the steps to implement these changes. Dr. Blackburn, on behalf of your dedicated administrators and of course all the Brevard teachers, I thank you for being the leader you are and making these important changes to rein in the runaway process known as evaluations. Life is so much better for all. Thank you.[1486.03][1486.03](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Shifrin. Mr. Clucci?
My name is Anthony Clucci. I'm the vice president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Just want to echo Gary's statements. I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much, Dr. Blackburn and board. I recently read an article by Randy Weingarten, the president of the American Federation of Teachers, in which he lays out four pillars to improve public education in the U.S. The four pillars are promoting children's well-being, supporting powerful learning, building teacher capacity, and fostering cultures of collaboration. I think all of you on this board, as well as the vast majority of teachers and administrators, would agree that these four pillars are the way to improve education as well. In fact, I would say this is exactly what we're trying to do under Dr. Blackburn, this board, and BFT's leadership. My belief in these pillars is why I'm not leave from the classroom and doing what I do. BFT President Dan Bennett, and I call this stuff big picture stuff. We need to remind ourselves about the big picture stuff frequently. You might ask, "Well, why do you need to remind each other about that frequently? Why isn't it the major focus of what we do?" Well, it's the same thing that happens to you. We get bogged down in tons of little issues that really shouldn't be issues. Tonight, I'm asking that you unleash us from many of these issues and empower us to put all our energy into promoting children's well-being, supporting powerful learning, building teacher capacity, and fostering cultures of collaboration. This is an area you control. So many of these draining, oh, so draining nickel and dime issues can be removed from our plate next year by making some slight changes to our contract. If we earn comp time, let us use it. Make it clear, we get 30 minutes for lunch, not 20 minutes to eat and 10 minutes to transport students. Ensure that administrators are required to follow the IPIS manual. Give us adequate time to get our grades into headline. Allow us to flex our time to get to doctor's appointments and deal with our own children's issues. Provide the time and compensation for double-handed teachers to write IEPs. Let us plan on all our early release Wednesdays instead of cramming in half-baked PD. And you know what the worst-kept secret is? Many of our top principals already do these things. It's only common sense to memorialize what the best principals do in our contract. Just these small changes would eliminate hundreds of issues BFT, HR, admin, and teachers deal with each day. It's hundreds of hours that are wasted on these issues, time which could be used to promote children's well-being, support powerful learning, build teacher capacity, and foster cultures of collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clucci. Mr. Bennett, you are up next, and as you make your way to the podium, our next three speakers in order will be Christopher Spinalli, Arthur Christensen, and Mike Bizarro.
Good evening, Dr. Blackburn. Good evening, members of the board. Yes to everything Gary said about our appreciation to the board and to Dr. Blackburn for the evaluation relief. Yes to everything Anthony said about let's put our eyes on the big picture and not spend so much time on these little issues. And speaking of a big-picture issue, we always have to have our eye on our state capital and see what they might be doing to our profession. I want to talk about a bill that's getting some traction, and I'm inviting all of you to have a role in helping educate the public and talk to our senators about it. It's called Senate Bill 856. It's something that we dealt with years ago, and it looks like we have to deal with again. It has to do with annual contract teachers and their reappointment. Years ago, in fact, 2011 to be specific, they took out of the law the chance of an annual contract teacher ever having the job security of a PSC teacher. And so the annual contract runs one year, it specifically ends on June 30th, and they may be picked up again on July 1st. So it takes an action of the board for someone to keep their job, even if the principal's determined and the board is determined that they did a good job during the year. So we worked collaboratively at the bargaining table where the law and negotiations begin for our local contract, and we guided to our local contract that those annual contract teachers will be automatically reappointed based on their evaluation. It sounds reasonable, except a person folks up in Tallahassee. So we have this bill going through, Senate Bill 856, that is an attack on our contract rights that would make it, so we have to take that out. And when I talk to principals about this, it's a disaster for them. They say, "Wow, how are they going to run a school?" We have almost 40% of our teachers here in Brevard County are annual contract. Imagine if principals can't- Imagine if principals can't get those people they want back under contract if they have to wait until July 1st. To tell them, it would cause a great upheaval to the profession, great upheaval to those teachers, deny principals, deny board the ability to get those people back. Anyway, it's called Senate Bill 856. It made it through the House, I believe. It's on its way to the Senate. We're hoping the Senate will stop it. The good news is that most of the Brevard delegation is performing just fine, except for five. We believe that in the Senate, we have a good chance of defeating this bill. Our state organization, Florida Education Organization, or Florida Education Association, FBA, has challenged local union leadership to reach out to boards and superintendents and see if we can get some kind of joint resolution, saying that we want to support local control, local negotiations, our local contract, our local ability to assign these annual contract teachers. So I'll be speaking to you individually and privately about this, such a joint resolution that could be issued from Brevard County schools. We have some other counties are doing it. We haven't had a major county sign on yet, but I look forward to your support on this because all we believe in is local control, local negotiation, and let's give job security, let's keep job security for these top-notch teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
My name is Chris Spinalli, and I am speaking for myself. I'm a resident of Brevard County. Mrs. Belford, members of the board, Dr. Blackburn, I'm speaking tonight to express concern over the board's policy of charging a $30 application fee for education-location options. I know this practice started several years ago as a means of filling the gap in the budget while allowing you to continue providing educational options to students and their families, but since this policy's adoption, an economic recovery has occurred. Your budget is stronger, and the state passed a law authorizing families to send their students to any school as long as that school meets certain conditions. Consequently, I believe the time has come to reevaluate this policy. As I understand it, with conversations with Mrs. Belford, the Division of Equity, Innovation, and Choice collected $285,000 in application fees last school year. Of that, $40,000 was paid to maintain the electronic application system. An estimated $40,000 was shared among the schools of choice, leaving roughly a $205,000 profit for the school district. It was explained to me that these remaining dollars then are used to offset the human capital of processing the applications, but let's be realistic, the electronic system does the lion's share of the work. If it didn't, I presume you wouldn't use it. It was also explained that the fee potentially offsets multiple applications from being submitted, thereby reducing the workload on the Division of Equity, Innovation, and Choice. To make matters worse, it was shared that it cost the district $5 to process an application electronically, which puzzles me as to why we charge $30. In reviewing the statute governing school choice, it doesn't prohibit the collection of a fee. There are a number of things not prohibited by the law, but because some things are not prohibited, does not mean we do them. To be frank, this is an odious practice, profiting off of taxpayers wanting to implement their statutory right. I reviewed the school choice processes used in our surrounding school districts and across the state. What's interesting is not one charges a fee to process education-location options or education program options. If profiting off taxpayers to offset cost-of-good policy, why aren't other school districts following suit? Given the $285,000 generated by the fee, one would think other districts would jump on the chance to raise that amount of capital, yet they do not. The Florida Constitution guarantees an equal protection of the lost. However, how can Statute 1002.31 be applied equitably when some are charged an application fee and others are not? This isn't the same as a free reduced lunch policy. This is a statute guaranteeing access to a public school that fits certain parameters. This is an absolute right, one that should be free from undue burdens. When some pay and others do not, is a far cry from equal protection. The thought that enrollment in an eligible school could be prevented for failure to pay is unconscionable. In my judgment, the time to reevaluate is now. This is something that should be considered by the entire board. I only speak for myself tonight, but I would think other families in Brevard feel the same way. Look forward to hearing from the superintendent and board members as to a time this can be discussed further. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
My name is Arthur Christensen, 2250 Winston Drive, Merritt Island. Stevenson School and Park has a padlock to gate every Memorial Day and Veterans Day, contrary to what is posted. Solution, that would be to have the people redesign and stop the bullying of military veterans. My second item is, I've read this as budget time. Stevenson School has lights turned on daily in the sunshine. Comparison: streetlights outside Stevenson School fans do not come on in the sunshine. As a Brevard school taxpayer, I recommend Stevenson School's budget be reduced by this Next item, I read in Florida Today, relaunch corridor busing. I was shocked. Please do not bring back that bullying, racing, and dangerous school transportation system in our residential area again. Our community was not designed or built for this danger. For instance, the school bus used to stop across from us, dropping off the students in the street, no adults, and wait for another corridor bus to come by and pick them up. Some parents from their other residential areas who dropped their children by car into our residential area for the next corridor bus. This stuff is illegal. $164 for a high and three points on a driver's license. When police help was requested by the residents, the sheriff lieutenant showed up and was told, "This is our policy, and we're not changing it." He left and has never been seen since. Other times, buses would pass standing residential vehicles or service vehicles and force uncoming traffic off the road. No school traffic tickets were ever issued or in the school zone, even when requested. The community should not have to live in fear. For years, I've written, "School superintendent, school board, law enforcement," about the dangerous and unsafe conditions Stevenson School caused in our residential area. My goal has been to assure safety in our residential area next to Stevenson School. So, no corridor busing, and I hope I'll never see another article in Florida Today like this one. I'm sure you will. Thank you, safety, and respect. I have some letters I sent you a couple of weeks ago concerning the items I just talked about. I haven't heard a thing from anybody, so I'm resubmitting them. I'll drop them to the board when I leave. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen, for joining us. If you would leave your items with the deputy, that would be fabulous.
I have just one example, one more example, and that's it, which proves Muhammad is not a prophet, and there is no Allah. And I'll tie this into the child safety issue. Islam organization claims to be from God's covenant with Abraham. These extracts are from islamcity.com. The Quran in Al-Baqarah 2136, we believe, which has bestowed upon Abraham, and there's 10 more things like that in the Quran. Now, in the Old Testament, Abraham writings, which Islam claims is from Allah, the All-Knowing, All-Perfect, All-Perfect Creator of the universe. We see in Genesis 17, "Call his name Isaac, I will establish a covenant with him for perpetual covenant." Exodus, Chapter 2, "The covenant which he made with Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob." It goes on like this 31 times, which the Muslims claim is from Allah. Okay, time to check the Quran. Quran, Al-Baqarah 2125, "And we covenant with Abraham and Israel." Al-Baqarah 2127, "When Abraham and Israel founded the temple." Wow, just incredible. The All-Perfect, All-Knowing, All-Perfect Creator of the universe, Allah, made the same mistake 31 times in the Old Testament, and then in the seventh century, he had to correct himself and now say his covenant is with my, is with Ismael. So what's the answer to all this? The answer is, there is no preposterous Allah. The Quran is a pack of Luciferian lies for the lost souls. And tying this into the safety issue, in Al-Quran, "Anfath 860 strike terror to the hearts of the enemy is your Allah and your enemies." The Board of Education is teaching us plausible and credible, a book, the Quran, that instructs Muslim students to assault their non-Muslim classmates. Now, God forbid, if this happens and there's a lethal or otherwise attack on a non-Muslim in the school district, you have to ask yourself, what is the proximate cause for this terror act? The answer to that is, the Board of Education is a proximate and primary cause since they are teaching us plausible and credible, the Quran, which directs and instructs Muslim students to assault their non-Muslim classmates. If such an attack happens, I promise you, I'll be contacting the family of the deceased students. They'll be getting a copy of this packet, which identifies how the board is betraying the children by lying about Islam. I have a packet for each board member. It contains what you have been informed of and when, and at that point, the family's lawyers will have to get involved, I suppose, in terms of, is this child endangerment by promoting the Quran, or is it depraving indifference to human life by promoting the Quran? Now, there's two possible preferences for the board at this time. Take the chance that there'll be dead students on campus, that's preference one. Preference two is tell the truth about Islam, that there is no Allah, so they don't need to kill anybody for Allah who does not exist. I recommend preference two. Preference one could just lead to what we see all around the world for the last 1,400 years. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bizarro. If you would like to leave your items with the deputy, we would appreciate it. Thank you. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. Do any board members wish to comment or make requests on any of the speakers this evening? Excellent. That moves us in, oh, Mr. Craig.
Sorry, I would just like to add the, for next May 9th discussion item, the, what am I saying?
Application fee.
Application fee, thank you.
Dr. Blackburn is working on that already, as I had a conversation with him prior to tonight's meeting.
Fantastic.
So there are discussions in the works. Okay, that moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are 18 agenda items under this category, two with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Blackburn. Does any board member wish to pull any items? Mr. Craig.
F-24.
Mr. Craig has requested to pull F-24, Repair Educational Services Facility. Pam, would you please pull that item for discussion? All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of F-24.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? And the vote passes 5-0. All right, Mr. Craig, since you pulled item F-24, I need a motion on the item to open for discussion, please.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Susan for discussion. Mr. Craig.
I know Ms. Belford, during comments or requests during the period after the agenda was released, asked some questions on this. I asked a couple of questions just a couple of days ago, or actually yesterday, and I apologize to Mr. Theodore for asking a little late. I had to go look at the dome to actually understand what it was, but in a nutshell, to boil it all down, I have a real problem with us spending nearly $100,000 on an aesthetic improvement or repair to this facility when we have so many other needs, specifically in some of the classrooms. I spent, as I talked about, I think Mr. Susan and Mr. Ziegler will attest to the fact, we toured Endeavor Elementary the day before spring break. We visited their portables, and to say that they are in a state of disrepair is probably an understatement. There are peeled-back tiles, the drainage, the ceiling tiles are falling apart, there are buckets, because the roof leaks at times. I just can't see us spending the money to repaint or resurface a dome when we have needs like that that are sitting out there right in front of us. And, you know, maybe it was by serendipity or whatever that we all were, the three of us were there and walked through those facilities, but I'd like to get specifically your take on that, since we spent some time there. I know Mr. Ziegler went and walked around and looked at the drainage specifically at Endeavor and just how the area is set up without any drainage, and how the, you can see the water damage on the portables and the rotting of the wood and that type of thing. And anyway, I think it is just something that we need to decide as a board, what we really want to do. And it's nothing against facilities. They are trying their best. They are attacking things as they come down. I know we approved this a year ago for about almost half the amount, 40% less, and then design issues have come in, and now it's more expensive to do this. I understand all that. I just am having a hard time thinking I can support it.
Dr. Blackburn. Mr. Craig, I think, were you asking Dr. Blackburn's take on it?
No.
Or you were asking?
Other board members, if anybody.
Oh, the other board members.
If anybody else had any.
Okay. Sorry, Dr. Blackburn. Mr. Ziegler.
I appreciate that the questions were asked about alternatives to doing that, and because I had asked that a while back, too. My understanding, and maybe we could get some clarification, is that the dome is leaking, and we need to do something about that. I'm assuming that means not just leaking onto the concrete surface below it, which is outdoors and not a big deal, but as leaking as in penetrating parts of the building, which will create future damage. If that's the case, we need to do something to protect the building from future damage. Doesn't matter to me whether we remove the dome, fix the dome, spray, what's that commercial where they spray the stuff on the boat? And they spray that stuff all over to keep it from leaking? It's not like anybody can see it really from the top, but I guess it depends on what the potential damage is if we don't do something. Mr. Theodore, if you could speak to that.
Yes, sir. The, one of the primary goals that we have in facilities is to ensure that the envelope is intact. Water intrusion causes multiple problems, interior quality, corrosion, structural steel. We have structural damage to the dome and the bases, structural components that we either need to fix or we need to remove the dome. I said previously, in my reply to Ms. Belford, that the dome is not functional, and only in the sense that it keeps the water out, or used to keep the water out. It has symbolic purposes. It can be removed for, less surprisingly, in spite of my previous answer, I did some research, and the contractor that is contracted to repair the dome has estimated quickly, but he's a pretty good estimator, that we can remove the dome and patch the roof, putting a new structural steel, for $60,000 to $70,000 instead of repairing the dome for about There are, I would say that there are many decisions that we make throughout the district that are done for aesthetic purposes rather than functional purposes, but I will take the direction of the board on the dome.
Mr. Susan, are you looking to speak? Mr. Ziegler, did you have follow-up for Mr. Theodore?
I guess one question would be, is if we do nothing, is there a potential for hazard to pedestrians walking into the entrance in sometime in the future because of the deteriorating condition?
It's a possibility, not in the near future, but we, I cannot recommend that we do nothing. There is water intrusion, there is structural damage. It won't fall down this year or maybe in five years, but it will, it will be a structural collapse at some point in the future, so to do nothing is not an option. There are options, it's just not one of those options.
Mr. Theodore, when you say there is structural damage, there is structural damage to, and this is a question, not a statement, the structural damage, if I understand correctly, is to the dome and not to the actual building, correct?
There is extensive corrosion to the structural steel components that support the base, the two bases, and the dome structure itself, so that those need to be, the siding and... and stucco on, the siding on the bases and the stucco on the dome need to be removed. The structural steel needs to be repaired and corrosion addressed and the siding and the dome put back in place as a repair, or we can remove the dome and the bases, fabricate some custom structural steel to fill in the hole, try to find a roofing material to match, to patch the roof and eliminate the dome. But regardless, doing nothing is really not something that I can recommend. You either need to remove it or repair it.
Mr. Craig.
Mr., is there any, I know in your response to me that there was a mention that it's coming up, and I'm paraphrasing, I can't remember what you exactly said, it was something about it's a competitive construction market. Is that because of the timeframe, we're approaching summer, it's the big building season? Is that just because building in general in the county? I mean, my point is, is it something that we can defer? We've deferred so much other stuff in the county. To me, you know, this is one of the things that we could defer, if we could, to maybe wait and take care of some, I don't know, some portables.
Yes, sir, we can wait a year. I mean, it's not going to fall down this year. We will, we will continue to give water intrusion, it's above an exterior area, it's not causing any mold issues, we were up there, so it is not an immediate danger. So waiting is an option, it's not a good option. It really, truly is not. I would, I planned to do something a year ago. It's not a timing issue with the summer, it is simply a very small, relatively small and relatively complex job, so that, just as a point of perspective, the designer who does nothing except roofing designs, it's ARC, that's all he does. He's an architect, that's all he does. He estimated the job should cost about $50,000 and it came in at one, I got two bids, one at ninety-eight, one at one hundred and forty-eight. It's simply a function of people are busy, they don't want to do small jobs, it's relatively complex.
Well, I appreciate your, your time and I know we spent a lot of time on it and I certainly respect your professional opinion, so I will move to amend the motion, or amend the item to remove the dome at the lower cost that I believe Mr. Theodore provided a estimate of. Does that make sense? Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Blackburn.
Is there a second? I already made a motion.
The estimate, Mr. Theodore, to remove it, is that a hard estimate?
No, sir, it is a conceptual estimate. I will, upon direction from the board, what I would do is hire a designer to design the structural steel and patch and go up for bids and then I would come back to the board. It will be over fifty thousand, so I would come back to the board with a, in about three months or so, with a board agenda item seeking to demolish the dome and patch. That, the very quick conceptual estimate was sixty to seventy thousand dollars. It may be more, I don't know at this time, but I have reason, fair confidence in their conceptual estimate.
The reason why I asked that, that question, Mr. Craig, is I wouldn't want to put the board in a position to give direction on a number that's not a hard estimate. So if it pleases the board, what we can do is perhaps withdraw the item, do some more of this research and then either bring it back as is, amended, or with a different option, perhaps a removal.
So I move to rescind my amendment. For your second.
Well, there's no, there was no second on your amendment, so you don't have to rescind it.
Yeah, there was no second on the, no second on the amended.
And we could move, move to postpone.
Did I move to?
We want to take, move to postpone until we have a bid on the alternative option.
Mr. B, do you have an, Mr. Bysline?
Yes, I do.
Should I withdraw it or have the board vote down?
A motion to, the superintendent can always withdraw this item. That would, that'd be the cleanest way to do it.
They'd have to undo the second in the motion, correct?
I didn't hear a second on any of the motions.
Well, we had.
On the first one?
We had an original motion to approve it for discussion.
Okay, well then, then, then a motion to.
Can we not just vote down that original motion, Mr. Bysline?
You could.
How about if we, we postpone indefinitely? That way, that just removes this item completely because we're going to bring back a new.
Well, not necessarily. It's, it's still, it's still on the table, but not at the.
Original, not the amended.
I would just, I would just have, I would just vote down the motion as it was seconded and have the superintendent just withdraw the item.
Okay.
Okay, so.
First round of discussion, I have a question.
I'm okay with voting it down.
Yes, that's where, that's where I'm going. Give me just one second, Ms. Duskovich has been trying to get a question in, so let me let her get her question in. We'll come back to the vote on the original motion, which was to approve the item, and then Dr. Blackburn can rescind. Okay, hold on one second because these are not in the normal order, so I have to find Ms. Duskovich and mute the rest of you. Okay, Ms. Duskovich, you are live.
You're doing a good job, Ms. Belford, thank you. Mr. Theodore, if we, I haven't seen the dome like you have, did you go up there and look at it? If we patch this for ninety thousand dollars, are we patching and then in two years, the other side needs to be patched for ninety thousand dollars? How long does the patch last, do you know?
It would be a complete refurbishment with additional waterproofing, twenty years, twenty-five years.
How long has it been up there?
Twenty-five years.
Okay, and we haven't had, done anything to it in twenty-five years?
None.
That you know of? Okay, thanks.
Any additional discussion before I call the question? Okay, please vote. Keep in mind that you are voting on the motion to approve this item.
We should vote it down so we can reevaluate.
That would be my recommendation, although I can't tell you how to vote. And the motion fails five-zero. Thank you for your cooperation, board. Dr. Blackburn, I believe you would like to pull that item. Are you removing the item, right? We voted.
I thought we just voted it down.
So we're good? Mr. Bysline?
You're good, the item's defeated.
Excellent.
You can bring it back revised.
All right, we don't need a break, do we?
No, ma'am.
Fabulous. We will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Blackburn.
There are two items for your consideration. The first one is item G-28 on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Craig, seconded by, I think Mr. Ziegler got in there before you, Mr. Any discussion? And the motion passes five-zero. Dr. Blackburn.
The next one is item G-29 on purchasing solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? And the motion passes five-zero. We'll move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight, Dr. Blackburn.
There are seven items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss any of the information items? Seeing none, that would move us to board member reports and discussion points section. In addition to discussion points, I request that board members please include any information requests to be placed on board assigned tasks during this time as well. We have no board discussion items on the agenda this evening. Do we have any board member reports? Was that a yes, Mr. Ziegler?
Yes, I can start out.
Mr. Ziegler.
Few items relevant to the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition meeting that we had last week. There were two presentations done, both very interesting. One was on an initiative that was initially started by the superintendents, but being researched by Orange County School Board on a school rating system, as opposed to our school grading system. And while I didn't know what to expect, I was actually impressed by what was being suggested because it referred me back to something Dr. Blackburn had said a while ago about the fact that if charter schools are doing a great job promoting themselves and we're not, shame on us, that we need to be talking about the great things that we do in our schools. And this, this rating system was more of a school report card that each school would publish, talking about their scores, their achievements, their graduation rates, maybe in the high schools, their, how much, how many scholarships were acquired, it could be athletic accomplishments, but there would be a standard template that each school can display to tell about the great things going on at that school and give the community a better feel for what's really going on and the great things being accomplished, because as we know, the letter grade really just does not do the school the justice, because nobody really knows what it means. So let's tell people what's going on, and so I thought that was a good suggestion. It was also mentioned that rather than, because my thought was a, some type of standard rating that we can do as a Central Florida Coalition of thirteen counties, however, the point was brought up that maybe there's some unique things in each county that we want to talk about and therefore we should actually implement our own school report card, so to say. So I was very glad to see that because it really followed what Dr. Blackburn's theory was, we need to do more about promoting the great things going on in our schools. So hopefully we can progress towards that. We started some initiative similar to that, I believe, a year or two ago, but never really evolved, so hopefully we can work on something of that nature and let our community know. The other presentation was by the Orlando Science Center, which apparently is pretty significant and has grown a lot over time. They do a quite a bit of STEM outreach, and I did realize, you know, our relationship with the zoo is a great relationship, the educational opportunities they present to us, and for most part, we're going to the zoo, there's a classroom at the zoo, and so I was thinking, well, the Science Center is a little far for us to travel, but the Science Center has outreach programs where they come to our districts and put on programs. I believe they do some outreach possibly to us already. I wasn't, they didn't have statistics on how they touch Brevard students, but they said that they do. But right now, the only thing I wanted to request was is that we can look into fulfilling a request of the Science Center, which is they have a teacher advisory academy and they would like a teacher from each school district to participate on that academy to, I believe it has to do with crafting opportunities for students in the school district. So, Dr. Blackburn, I will get you more information on their request and hopefully we can have one of outstanding science teachers participate in that in the Central Florida area. I'd also like to look into how, what programs they might offer that we might be interested in, now that we know they do outreach. Odds are, we probably have plenty of staff who know everything that they do, but it was a great presentation to see, very exciting stuff going in Central Florida. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Any other board member reports? Ms. Duskovich?
Just want to report quickly. I know you all went to Tallahassee. I went up with a couple of members from the Florida Coalition of School Board Members and since we are paying for my membership there, I just wanted to report back and let you all know that I went up and did attend and visited with several from our delegation, speaking on some of our legislative priorities. I attended the Senate Education Committee meeting, which was an eye-opener. They added fifteen or sixteen amendments to the education testing bill in about fifteen minutes, so one per minute they were flying through. I don't know what that's going to look like in the end, a bunch of sausage, it sounded like. I also attended the House Education Appropriation Committee meeting and spoke in support of a bill that I'm supporting personally. We are not as a board, so I don't know if that's something I report in, and that is just opening up the tests, the FSA and the EOCs so that parents have access to them once every three years. I don't think it's anything any of us would be totally opposed to, so I believe in that bill, so I spoke on behalf of that, and that's it. That's all good.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Duskovich. Any other board member reports? Mr. Susan.
Currently, the Brevard Cultural Alliance, along with Lee Brevard, are being cut inside the budget over at the, in the county. BCA, which I am a personal board member for, they're cutting the hundred thousand dollars of funding for that. I wanted to give you guys the heads up that as far as war regards, as far as school boards, there are grants that they give us where they send in a lot of artists into our art areas and stuff like that. I will tell you that the indication coming from those county commissioners is that we are going to lose the funding for the BCA. They're going to try to fight it down to the last minute, but if we do that, a lot of those artists that are inside of our classrooms are not going to be there next year, and we may want to look at an opportunity to try to bring that in-house and write the grants ourselves to try to get those artists, because it's a huge opportunity for our kids. The other thing is, is that when we had our expulsion hearing the other day, there was some inadequacies about what was said and all those things, so I went through and met with some of the SROs, some of the assistant principals, deans, teachers throughout the district and came up with some information. I'd like to put a board discussion on discipline on the May 9th agenda, if that's okay, and I'll meet with staff prior to put together what I found.
So if you would just get with Dr. Blackburn to ensure that we have all of the right people a part of that conversation prior to bringing it for a board discussion, that would be awesome.
Will do.
And Pam, if you will make note to add that to the agenda for May 9th. All right, any other board member reports? All right. Dr. Blackburn, I think you have a superintendent's report, and the agenda shows an update on the audit findings, but I think we are postponing that discussion, are we not?
I'll add that.
There you go.
Yes, ma'am, I can add that as part of, part of my report.
Okay.
One, I'd like to say thank you to the Brevard chapter of Jack and Jill. I was a judge on Saturday, April 1. We were the hosts, the Brevard chapter hosted the regional Ann Owen Gordon Oratorical Contest, right? It was a phenomenal event. I love watching kids stand on their feet, make an argument, compelling argument, very, very difficult to judge. We did end up with a winner, but I ran to my car after the tally was, was done, because they were all phenomenal. They, Jack and Jill, they rotate around the state for regional host. I did recommend that we cease and desist rotating and just host here in Brevard every year, so we'll see if that works for next year. April 3rd, got another opportunity, Mr. Ziegler, I think you were there as well, my favorite teacher ceremony at Barnes and Noble. Again, listening to students write about the experiences they've had with their teachers and it's just, it's always amazing what resonates in the mind of a thirteen or fourteen-year-old, but it was a pretty touching event. And then on April 6th, we got a chance to witness the one million dollar moment at the supply zone, so that was, that was pretty amazing as well. Saturday, April 29th, at 1,500 North Atlantic Cocoa Beach, myself, along with, to date, forty-five other individuals will walk or run 3.2 miles for March of Dimes and March of Babies, right, for, for people who are born unpremature or who spend time in the NICU or, or have other very unfortunate, you know, situations that happen. Ironically, my sister gave birth to a gorgeous little baby girl on Palm Sunday, and she ended up spending close to seventy-two hours in NICU because of temperature irregularities. She's home now, everything is fine, but got a chance there just to ponder those unfortunate situations as well and spend some time in the NICU visiting with her and my sister. So if you haven't had a chance yet to sign up for the Superintendent Steppers team, then go online and do that. I'll see you all April 29th at 3:00 PM. That's my report. Last board meeting, I did discuss the audit findings, specifically what to do with the auditor's recommendation to recover dollars from our foundation and cease and desist that practice and to do something similar with the overpayment of best and brightest to teachers. The. There is a deadline of April twenty-third. If it pleases the board, I am asking for an extension before making that decision. Very complex, we're getting some great legal advice, but still, these are very consequential decisions that we have to make, so again, we're going to be submitting a request to give us more time to delay. We think we can get anywhere from three to five weeks, four to six weeks opportunity to continue to cross Ts and dot Is before making a decision like that. That's my report.
Very good, thank you, sir. Any other discussion from board members? All right, there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned, have a great evening.